Well, good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley-Evan School District 6. Today is the 12th day of September 2022, and this meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll call for us, please?
Director Bentley?
Present.
Director Mash?
Present.
Director Matthews?
Present.
Director Mueller?
Present.
Director Norwood?
Present.
Director Pappas?
Present.
Director Sullivan?
Present.
All board members, present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, again, welcome, whether you're joining us in person tonight or joining us online. We're glad that you're joining us for the meeting. We do have a number of things coming up in the meeting, and so I'll keep my comments short. I did just want to make one announcement and then also one congratulations. And so the first announcement is that on Friday, we had a VIP tour of our bond projects that started at Madison and went to McCullough and then to Toynton and then to Greeley West. And when you hear VIP, that means very important person. You do not have to consider yourself a very important person to go on that tour. You simply have to sign up, and we have another one of those coming up on Wednesday. And so for anybody in the community who would like to see those new facilities and to get the VIP tour, we have another one of those tours happening Wednesday. It's at 8:30 at this administration building. And so you can find that information on our website, I believe. Also, I would just want to say congratulations to Greeley Central High School graduate Raquel Gonzalez, who's been enrolled in the Vestas Apprenticeship Program since June of 2021. And Raquel has been selected by Vestas to travel to Denmark for an eight-week training experience. She is scheduled to leave, and she did leave on September 6th, and is currently enrolled in our Advanced Manufacturing Pathway, our PTech program, which pays for two full years at Ames Community College after high school graduation. She can earn an associate's in applied science, paid for entirely by this program. And we want to say congratulations to Raquel, but also just to let you know, in our meeting tonight, we will have a presentation about those internships. You can go to our website and find out more about the internship program that we have and different snippets from different student interns, what they've been doing. It's a fantastic program. We just always want to say thank you again to our voters for the mill Libya ride that made that possible. And so that's all I have tonight. And before we do anything else, we need to approve an agenda, and we'll need a motion to do so.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is the proclamation recognizing September 15th through October 15th, 2022, as National Hispanic Heritage Month, and this is an action item that also needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 adopts the Honorary Proclamation Recognizing September 5th through October 15th, sorry, September 15th through October 15th, 2022, as National Hispanic Heritage Month. Second.
Thank you both. We are going to have Ms. Mueller first read this proclamation in English, and then Ms. Pappas read this in Spanish. But I want to invite Ms. Betsy Valdez, is she in the audience, to come to the podium? Welcome, Ms. Valdez. Thank you for being here, and we won't have you say anything just yet, but we wanted you to be upfront while the proclamation was being read. Ms. Valdez is here tonight to receive this proclamation.
It'd be my honor to do so. Proclamation recognizing September 15th through October 15th, 2022, as National Hispanic Heritage Month, whereas Hispanic Heritage Month recognizes and celebrates the significant contributions of Americans tracing their ancestry to Spain, Mexico, Central and South America, and the Spanish-speaking nations of the Caribbean; and whereas the observance of Hispanic Heritage Month began in 1968 through an act of Congress declaring National Hispanic Heritage Week, which was later extended to a month-long celebration; and whereas more than 62 million Americans are of Hispanic and Latino descent; and whereas 14,691 students in Greeley-Evan School District 6 are of Hispanic and Latino descent, making up 63% of the entire student body; and whereas the contributions of Americans who are of Hispanic and Latino descent in the fields of science, politics, medicine, education, art, music, writing, public service, and many other careers have greatly enhanced and advanced these fields, improving the lives of all Americans; and whereas the art, food, dance, music, and culture of Hispanic and Latino Americans are part of the colorful weave in the fabric of all American culture; and whereas District 6 graduates of Hispanic and Latino descent have and will continue to contribute greatly to the cities of Greeley and Evans, enriching our communities and advancing our businesses and economy. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 recognizes and celebrates September 15th, 2022, through October 15th, 2022, as National Hispanic Heritage Month, and encourages all employees, students, families, and community members to honor our citizens of Hispanic and Latino descent and recognize their immense contributions to our communities, our state, our nation, and our world. Given under my hand and the executive seal of Weld County School District 6 this 12th day of September 2022, Mr. Michael Matthews, President.
Thank you, Ms. Mueller. Ms. Pappas, would you be so kind as to read this in Spanish as well?
I will. It is my honor, and please give me some grace if I mispronounce anything. Proclamación reconociendo las fechas de 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre del 2022 como Mes Nacional de la Herencia hispana, donde el mes de la herencia hispana reconoce y celebrar las contribuciones significantes de americanos que han mostrado su linaje a España, México, Centro y Sur America, y los países de habla hispana del Caribe. Y donde el celebrar el mes de la herencia hispana comenzó en 1968 a través de una ley pastrosinada por el Congreso declarando la Semana Nacional de la Herencia hispana, la cual luego fue extendida a celebrarse durante el mes completo. Y donde más de 62 millones de americanos son de ascendencia hispana y latina; y donde 14,691 alumnos en las escuelas del Distrito 6 de Greeley-Evan son de ascendencia hispana o latina cubriendo 63% de la población estudiante. Y donde las contribuciones de americanos de ascendencia hispana o latina en los campos de la ciencia, política, medicina, educación, arte, música, escritura, servicio público, y en muchas otras carreras que grandemente han mejorado y logrado avances en estos campos, mejorando la vida de todos los americanos. Y donde el arte, comida, baile, música, y cultura de los americanos hispanos y latinos forman parte de la estructura social de toda la cultura americana. Y donde graduados de ascendencia hispana o latina del Distrito 6 han y siguiendo contribuyendo grandemente a las ciudades de Greeley y Evans, enriqueciendo nuestras comunidades y mejorando nuestra industria y economía. Ahora, por lo tanto, se proclama que la Mesa Directiva de Educación del Distrito Escolar 6 de Greeley-Evan reconoce y celebra del 15 de septiembre del 22 al 15 de octubre del 2022 como el Mes Nacional de la Herencia hispana y alienta a todos sus empleados, alumnos, familias, y miembros de la comunidad a honrar a nuestros ciudadanos de ascendencia hispana y latina y a reconocer sus inmensas contribuciones a nuestras comunidades, a nuestro estado, nuestra nación, y a nuestro mundo. Otorgado bajo mi mano y seu ejecutivo del Distrito Escolar 6 del Condado Weld este 12 día de septiembre del 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Pappas. Before we open this up for comments, and I imagine we might have a few from our board members, Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say on this proclamation?
I will just say, great job, Ms. Pappas. Thank you for reading that in Spanish for us. Welcome, Betsy. I know that you have a guest or two with you here tonight. Betsy is the president of the Hispanic Women of Weld County Organization and really honored. I didn't make contact with her until late last week, and she freed her schedule up to be here tonight. So we'll give you a chance to address the board here after you hear comments from them.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Any comments or questions from board members? Ms. Mueller?
So I guess the only question I have is probably more for you, Dr. Pilch. Are we doing anything interesting in the schools to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month?
We are always doing interesting things in the schools, Ms. Mueller. Yeah, lots of different activities going on around the district this month. And as you look at your school calendars, you will even see some of those activities at the schools that you represent. So not all activities are during the day, some are also in the evening.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mueller. Any other comments from board members? Ms. Pappas?
I would just say, thank you for letting me read that proclamation in Spanish. I don't speak Spanish very often, so it sometimes is a challenge, but it also is quite an honor. And it also is really important, I think, that people realize that this proclamation is important for our families, for our community, and for all of us, as well as all of our students. So thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Ms. Pappas. And before we vote, I would just say again, 14,691 students in our district are Hispanic or Latino descent, making up 63% of this district. And that is a significant number. And heritage, culture, language, music, it's so important to who we are. And so we're so very proud to make this recognition tonight, and thank you both and whoever else is here for being here tonight. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Ms. Lemon, if you will hang on just a second, I'll sign this. Make sure I'm signing the right one for you. Is there, before I present this, is there anything that you would like to say, Ms. Valdez?
Well, good evening, everyone. As mentioned, my name is Betsy Valdez, and I'm president of Hispanic Women of Weld County. On our knowledge, Alicia Johnson, she is our Public Relations Officer here for Hispanic Women of Weld County as well. On behalf of Hispanic women, our board of directors and our members, we just want to say thank you for inviting us to be here. It truly is an honor to be able to accept this proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. I believe that this is such, something so special, important, and it is very, it's greatly appreciated. As mentioned, our Hispanic Latino population, we have contributed so much, not only to this community, to this district, but also nationwide. And so we're just very grateful. I know that there are a lot of individuals who do things every single day to make an impact in this community, and I'm just so grateful just to be here today and just be able to just say thank you. Muchísimas gracias a todos ustedes. En realidad es un honor poder estar aquí, poder recibir esta proclamación de parte de las mujeres hispanas de Weld County. Es un honor, es un gran orgullo poder recibir esto. Nuestra comunidad latina hispana contribuye tanto a este país, a esta comunidad, a este distrito. Así que en realidad es un orgullo y muchísimas gracias. Thank you very much.
Again, thank you for being here, Ms. Valdez. Our next on our agenda is a proclamation for UNC Week in District 6, and this is an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 adopts the proclamation declaring September 19th through September 23rd, 2022, as UNC Week in District 6.
Second.
Thank you both. Before we go any further, I would like to invite President Feinstein, he's with us tonight, to join us at the podium. And Mr. Norwood, would you be so kind as to read this proclamation for us?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Proclamation UNC Week in District 6, September 19th through September 23rd, 2022, whereas the University of Northern Colorado, UNC, has been located in the heart of Greeley since the university founding in 1889, and whereas UNC is among the top public universities in the United States and is particularly renowned for its College of Education and Behavioral Sciences, which produces some of the best teachers, principals, and administrators in the nation; and whereas the University of Northern Colorado is Weld County's institution of higher education and provides an excellent, affordable, accessible education to hundreds of District 6 graduates each and every year. And whereas many hundreds of UNC graduates have gone on to work in District 6 schools and offices; and whereas University of Northern Colorado and Greeley-Evan School District 6 engage in a robust partnership that greatly benefits both institutions; and whereas UNC's annual Homecoming Week for 2022 begins on Monday, September 19th, and runs through Sunday, September 25th, 2022; and whereas it is appropriate that our school district help recognize, celebrate, and support opportunities for quality higher education for our students and community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 declares September 19th through September 23rd, 2022, to be recognized as UNC Week in District 6, and that district staff and students should be encouraged to wear UNC apparel that week and to proudly display bear flags, pennants, and banners at their homes, schools, and offices during Homecoming Week. Given under my hand, the executive seal of Weld County School District 6, this 12th day of September 2022, Mr. Michael Matthews, President.
Thank you, Mr. Norwood. And before we open this up to board members, Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say about this proclamation?
Well, I, you know, and I know all of you can say the same. And we just enjoy such a tremendous relationship with the University of Northern Colorado. And over the years that I've been here, I think that relationship has become even more critical to the work that we do here in the district. And it's just a great partnership and really excited to have you here tonight, Dr. Feinstein, and excited to hear a few words from you tonight.
There are comments or questions from board member? Ms. Mueller?
So as an employee at UNC, I have to say I'm proud to work for an institution that works very hard to educate a high percentage of first-generation, low-income, and Hispanic students. We are proceeding to become a Hispanic-serving institution, and I'm very proud of that fact and happen to work with many of those students who are first-generation, low-income, and underrepresented in higher ed. And I just couldn't be more proud to support this proclamation and say, yes, wear your bear apparel, go Bears, once a bear, always a bear.
Thank you, Ms. Mueller. Ms. Mash?
I would just also like to say I'm a proud UNC alum in the nursing program, and I appreciate the opportunities that my students have had going to UNC field trips, their musical theater, my children go to Fred Chardis, or they went to Fred Chardis. I appreciate that partnership and allowing a space for them this year. So thank you very much for this relationship that we have with the district and UNC.
Mr. Norwood?
I just want to say, as a proud UNC alum from way back in the early 80s, thank you. And as a former teacher, I'm thrilled when some of my students say that they're going to go to UNC to study education. I just, I can't thank you enough for all that you do.
And Dr. Feinstein, I would just ask, I'm not a UNC alum, but I appreciate very much the concurrent enrollment program. My children have taken classes at UNC and received college credit for those classes. And I just can't say thank you enough to the partnership, for the partnership that we have and enjoy with UNC. And so I think that's all we have. So we'll vote on this, and then Dr. Feinstein will let you make some comments as well. Ms. Lemon?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Mr. Feinstein, Dr. Feinstein, sorry, would you like to respond?
I would. I'm honored to accept this proclamation recognizing UNC Week in District 6. Thank you, President Matthews, the entire District 6 and the Board of Education, as well as Dr. Pilch, thank you for all of your wonderful comments. It's so nice to hear how many of you have degrees from UNC. And as you noted, there is a longstanding partnership between District 6 and UNC. UNC has produced more than 50% of all educators in Colorado. Many people working in the district have a connection to the university. Additionally, our collaboration helps support students. This fall, there were 206 new full-time degree-seeking undergraduate students enrolled at UNC from Weld County, and nearly 50% are from District 6 schools. Many are recipients of the Greeley Promise Scholarship, which awards $2,000 per year to eligible students. And as part of UNC Week, UNC is waiving the application fee for any District 6 high school senior to use on our first-year application. Now more than ever, we need strong partnerships to create a seamless educational pathway from pre-kindergarten through college. In Colorado, resident undergraduate enrollment declined by 9% since 2019, and only 31% of Colorado learners earn a post-secondary credential. To help close that widening gap between high school graduation and college degree attainment, we have to help students envision a path to college, support their success at every step, and help them see how a degree can change their lives and the lives of the people in their families and their communities. So as part of UNC Week, we will be visiting high schools in the district and interacting with potential students. So please watch for other ways that we can be involved with the district. We thank you very much for your continued support, and go Bears. Thank you.
Go Bears. Thank you, President Feinstein. Thank you, President Feinstein. Again, we appreciate the partnership that we have and enjoy with UNC. We're now to our public participation portion of our meeting, and our speakers, we have a number of speakers tonight, and they will be given three minutes. At every board meeting, I read a statement, and that statement ends with a sentence defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. We received a number of concerns over the last few weeks about some of the comments that were made in the last few board meetings by people. One, I just need to apologize if there were remarks that should have been ruled out of order that I failed to rule out of order. Again, my apologies for not doing that. But I will just say it's very hard to determine when something is actually abusive or defamatory in real time. That's not something I want to try to do. And so what I would encourage all of us to do is to speak, not just in a way that's not defamatory or abusive, but simply to speak respectfully as you come to the podium. One of the things that we do as a board that is helpful is that though we often disagree, and sometimes we very passionately disagree with one another on an issue or on a particular vote, we never actually address one another publicly. We never, I've been on this board for five years. I've served with about 12 different board members. I cannot recall an instance where a board member has even looked to another board member and said, "You were wrong." That's just not the way that we conduct business. And one, it has to do with the amount of respect that we have for one another. We can disagree very respectfully, but it also has to do with the fact that we're a school board and that we have children and students here often. We have students that watch this meeting online. And so I would encourage you, we welcome disagreement. We welcome your opinions and your thoughts, and again, any disagreement. But if you would refrain from directly speaking to or about someone else, whether that's a board member or a member of our administration, or students, or another public speaker, we would greatly appreciate your cooperation in that. And so with that, I would like to welcome our first speaker tonight, and that is Ms. Sarah Durdangelo. I hope I pronounced that correctly, and welcome, Ms. D'Angelo, if I did. You'll have three minutes.
You were very close. Thank you. I would just like to preface my comment to say that what I have to say tonight, I put zero blame on any person in my school. I think that they are, every single person there is amazing, and I don't, it's a systemic issue in my opinion, and I just want everyone to know that. So hello, my name is Sarah Durdangelo, and I'm the Library Media Associate at Dos Rios Elementary. Though I do not have a teaching certificate, I do have a master's in library science and am currently working on my E.D. I would ask for you to imagine quickly a world where we no longer have the same qualifications for our principals. If we suddenly changed and paid our principals $15 an hour and only required an unrelated associate's degree, how well would that go for our schools? That is what is happening to our libraries. Librarians are highly educated group of people who are passionate, multi-talented, and are a necessary resource for the schools. I understand the difficulty that has come with new technology and trying to fit it into our schools, but it is important to realize that libraries and technology are not competitors. They fit beautifully hand-in-hand, just as they do in our public libraries. In fact, libraries are far more than just literacy. Research shows that schools that have an actual library program with a certified librarian have higher test scores, lower behavioral problems, and are more successful in social-emotional learning. Reading for Joy teaches children emotional regulation, information literacy, anxiety coping techniques, empathy, technological literacy, sympathy, and it leads to future reading. When you have unqualified, underpaid people in the library, the library falls into disrepair. For instance, when I first started at Dos Rios, the average age of the books in the library was 1972. It should never be more than 15 years old in an elementary school library. The materials in the library were, quite frankly, not only outdated, but some were racist and harmful. Though through hard work, I have brought it up to 2,002 and still am working on the nonfiction section. In the end, it's not a literacy problem, it's an equity problem. We are the ones who update and diversify the collections and create a safe space for everyone in our school. We connect and facilitate access through guidance and specialized programming. In your packets that I gave you today, you will find a lot of peer-reviewed studies providing some of the points I made today and making additional ones. It also starts with a graphic showing the decline of teacher librarians, both in the country and in our state. That graphic can also be found in the link sent out, which is to the slide project, a very special project that is keeping close watch on the numbers of certified librarians across the country and in Colorado. In it, you can see just how quickly we are all disappearing in this state. I am a part of the Colorado Association of Libraries, and I'm on the Legislative Committee. We are taking this to our legislators and will continue until this practice is reversed and there are protections in place statewide. But you can be one of the ones who stands up for what is right and protects librarians before it becomes a requirement of you. I have like one sentence, is that okay? Okay. Something as simple as proper pay can help get the right people in these jobs and to stop the high turnover rate. These kids deserve their librarians and have one that they can depend on to stay with them. Don't let the kids go without these pillars of our schools and communities. Please don't let us disappear completely. In the classes that I have taken, responding to emergencies was one of my personal favorites that I took at Ames, because it gave me the chance to work with my peers on how to handle emergencies out in the community, to which I later used these skills on my last day as a senior in an occurring emergency in a restaurant. Not only did concurrent enrollment classes allow me to take advantage into my degree, but it also gave me the opportunity to act on this in the community that gave me the sense that this is something that I want to do after graduating. Concurrent enrollment classes allow students to further their education and their knowledge in the degree, creating that dream that they will achieve their goal and become and doing what they set their minds to. Furthermore, it creates bonds between peers, professors, and future employers that will benefit the student in the long run. Thanks to the Dream Team and the opportunity to have been able to take concurrent enrollment classes, I am expected to graduate from UNC with my bachelor's in human services and a minor in criminal justice this December of 2022, making it a total of about three years that I have been in college. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Next speaking tonight, we have Dr. Leah Bornstein. Thank you for being here tonight, President Bornstein. I appreciate your presence, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. I won't take three minutes. President Matthews, board members, Dr. Pilch, thank you for allowing us to spend a few moments to chat a bit. I would basically just like to focus on the wonderful partnerships that we have between Ames and D6, and you certainly have heard several of them, I'm sure you're going to hear some more. A few weeks ago, you heard about our Early College Academy, which is also fantastic and wonderful. The partnership between the two organizations is extremely important for the sustainability of our greater community. And as I said, as you heard at your last meeting, Early College Academy is an incredible asset to the district and the community. And this program actually is mirrored throughout the country, and that shows its importance in the success and the sustenance and the foundation of communities that thrive. Ames, as you probably know, is a Hispanic-serving institution, serving also first-generation students. Concurrent enrollment is an imperative aspect of what Ames does. About a third of our enrollment is concurrent enrollment throughout all of Weld County. Students have the opportunity to gain experience in career and technical education, and then leave high school with credentials to enter the workforce directly or to move into post-secondary education pathways. It's critical for the community to continue to invest in public education so that students can continue to enter the workforce prepared or to move on to post-secondary education. As you know, the Mill Levy Override has supported these initiatives. I would like to share with you why I will vote for the Mill Levy Override if that's the direction you decide to go. To me, it's not a tax increase, but a continuation of what we already have in our accounts and our budget line items, if you will. It sunsets in 10 years, so we know that this is not ongoing. While constitutionally, it's the responsibility of the state to fund public education, states across the nation are defunding both public ed and higher ed, as we all know. K-12 is not getting more funding from the state. It's constantly challenging, and quite frankly, it's our responsibility as citizens to ensure that our community remains strong and vibrant. That's what we do for our children. That's what we do for each other. Due to the massive growth that's occurring in northern Colorado, it's also our responsibility as citizens, municipalities, and public organizations to support infrastructure growth. Finally, D6 has our trust. We've witnessed D6 as an excellent steward of the taxes it's already collected and using the money as it said it would. You walk your talk, and we can trust your plan. Thank you for all the outstanding partnerships that you approve between Ames and D6 and, would I say, UNC, since we are a pathway. Thank you for supporting Ames, and thank you for being and doing everything that you do for the Greeley Evans students. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here tonight, Dr. Bornstein. Next speaking tonight, we have, and I may mess this pronunciation up, Ms. Susan Nokel. My apologies if I mispronounced your name.
You're good.
Well, welcome, and thank you for being here. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to start by thanking those of you who came through our school and my classroom last week. It was great that you could come see the good things we're doing at Billy Martinez. I have a question for you. Do you know who Billy Martinez was? If you're curious, we have a book that one of our CLD teachers, Kathy Battelson, wrote with a group of students back in the 2018-2019 school year. She even worked with some of Billy Martinez's family, some of whom are still involved in our school through Christmas angels in December. Our office manager, Lucia Cruz, has copies if you'd like to read it. Billy Martinez Elementary School has quite a history. It's been open since 1951, originally as Park Elementary, and was renamed Billy Martinez in 1972. I personally have been there for my entire 11-year career, and I did my practicum there. We have an amazing student body and very dedicated staff members. We have plenty of accomplishments and celebrations that I feel people should hear about. Did you know that on CMASS last year, fifth-grade students showed 82% growth in math? We also showed 85% growth in math and WEA. Did you know that many of our staff members have had the privilege of attending Buck Institute's PBL World Conference in Napa Valley? We've experienced tremendous growth through our PBL work, and we're even named the PBL Champion School in 2019. This is an award given each year at the PBL Conference to one school in the entire country. We were also chosen to have our second-grade Hunger Project filmed by Buck Institute. It's now a video that is used during the conference, so people from all over the world see the amazing things that we're doing at Billy Martinez. This is my final year at Billy Martinez and in this district, as I am moving to California in June, and I plan to spend this year spreading word of wonderful things happening at my school, because I am proud of our accomplishments, and I think more people should hear about them. Thank you for listening and for all you do for our district. I look forward to sharing more amazing stories about Billy Martinez at future meetings. Have a great evening and go Broncos.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Nokel. And just for those that might not know, PBL is project-based learning, and that is, we were very privileged to get to see what was happening at Billy Martinez earlier last week. Next on our speakers list is Mr. Kelly Longanker. Welcome, Mr. Longanker. Thank you for being here tonight, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for volunteering to be on the school board and making some of the difficult decisions. As a person who has spoke numerous times here at the board meeting, I've been in favor of some of the things you've done and opposed some of the things you've done, but tonight I need to talk about the Mill Levy Override and what it means to me as a teacher. When I first came to District Six, I started at a middle school in a woodshop. And back then, we had fees, that's how we had our budget to provide all the things that we get to do for hands-on learning for our students. Well, I was, oh, this should be nothing, easy work, right? Well, then we find out that less than 30% or 40% of our families could actually afford to pay those fees. Then as a teacher, I had to find the resources to make sure every student got that true experience and learned something in my classroom. I got some money from my principal, but that turned into, in order to make sure every kid got those skills and the things that they needed to do, I had to go out to the community and ask for donations. And some of that was, I went to construction sites. As a shop teacher, I went to construction sites, and I had to dumpster dive, with permission, of course. But part of my job as a teacher was I had to go to construction sites and ask for their scrap materials, take that back to the woodshop, clean it and prep it so that it was safe and ready for students to use. After the Mill Levy Override, I've changed schools, and when I went to the program I was at, I was excited to get back into my roots in teaching the agriculture program, but I walked into a shop that was equipped with equipment that was older than me, and I was just baffled at the fact that I was walking into an industrial shop setting, and half the equipment was at my age. It was there since the creation and the building of the building, and I was just astonished that we didn't have an equipment replacement budget that actually did that. With the passing of the MLO, we've been able to start replacing equipment, so students are getting up-to-date technology, industry-based tools, so they're learning skills and trades that will move them forward in their future. As a taxpayer, a citizen of Greeley, I cannot thank you enough for making my life easier. I dread the fact that if we don't pass this Mill Levy Extension and continue that funding without means for my job, I really don't want to have to go out and beg welding companies for scrap metal so that I can clean it and prep it so kids can weld. I don't want to go back to construction sites and pick up scrap materials from people that are building homes so that I can just have the basic supplies, because without that MLO dollars, my budget would be cut dramatically, and I know that. I understand that. And I just want to thank you each and everyone for considering the MLO. That extension is important, it means so much to our kids, it means so much to me as a teacher, so I actually get to teach and do the things that I love and I'm passionate about, because it's important, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Longanker. Next speaking tonight, we have Ms. Jamie Weber. Welcome, Ms. Weber. Thank you for being here tonight, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, board. I'm here to inform you of some materials that are in your school libraries. This book is a father talking about his daughter. "The creamy toe of her bare foot scratching a velvet leg, it was such a small and simple gesture, but it filled him then with a wondering softness. Not the usual lust to part tight legs with his own, but a tenderness, a protectiveness, a desire to cover her foot with his hand and gently nibble away the itch from the calf with his teeth. He did it then, and he started into laughter. He did it now. The tenderness welled up in him, and he sank to his knees, his eyes on the foot of his daughter. Crawling on all fours toward her, he raised his hand and caught the foot in an upward stroke. She lost her balance and was about to careen to the floor. He put his head down and nibbled at the back of her leg, his mouth trembled at the firm sweetness of the flesh. He closed his eyes, letting his fingers dig into her waist. The rigidness of her shocked body, the silence of her stunned throat, was better than Pauline's easy laughter had been. The confused mixture of his memories of Pauline and doing the wild and forbidden thing excited him, and a bolt of desire ran down his genitals, giving at length and softening the lips of his anus. Surrounding all of this lust was a border of politeness. He wanted to F. her tenderly." This is his daughter. "But the tenderness would not hold, the tightness of her vagina was more than he could bear. His soul seemed to slip down to his guts and fly out into her, and the gigantic thrust he made into her then provoked the only sound she made, a hollow suck of air in the back of her throat, like the rapid loss of air from a circus balloon. Following the disintegration and the falling away of sexual desire, he was conscious of her wet, soapy hands on his wrists, the fingers of her clenching. But whether her grip was from hopeless, from a hopeless but stubborn struggle to be It was there since the creation and the building of the building. And I was just astonished that we didn't have a supply or an equipment replacement budget that actually did that. With the passing of the MLO, we've been able to start replacing equipment so students are getting up-to-date technology, industry-based tools, so they're learning skills and trades that will move them forward in their future. As a taxpayer, a citizen of Greeley, I cannot thank you enough for making my life easier. I dread the fact that if we don't pass this Mill Levy extension and continue that funding without means for my job. I really don't want to have to go out and beg welding companies for scrap metal so that I can clean it and prep it so kids can weld. I don't want to go back to construction sites and pick up scrap materials from people that are building homes so that I can just have the basic supplies because without that MLO dollars, my budget would be cut dramatically, and I know that. I understand that. And I just want to thank you each and everyone for considering the MLO. That extension is important and means so much to our kids, means so much to me as a teacher so I actually get to teach and do the things that I love and I'm passionate about because it's important, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Longacre. Next speaking tonight, we have Ms. Jamie Weber. Welcome, Ms. Weber. Thank you for being here tonight, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Board. I'm here to inform you of some materials that are in your school libraries. This book is a father talking about his daughter. "The creamy toe of her bare foot scratching a velvet leg. It was such a small and simple gesture, but it filled him then with a wondering softness. Not the usual lust to part tight legs with his own, but a tenderness, a protectiveness, a desire to cover her foot with his hand and gently nibble away the itch from the calf with his teeth. He did it then, and he started into laughter. He did it now. The tenderness welled up in him, and he sank to his knees, his eyes on the foot of his daughter. Crawling on all fours toward her, he raised his hand and caught the foot in an upward stroke. She lost her balance and was about to careen to the floor. He put his head down and nibbled at the back of her leg, his mouth trembled at the firm sweetness of the flesh. He closed his eyes, letting his fingers dig into her waist. The rigidness of her shocked body, the silence of her stunned throat, was better than Pauline's easy laughter had been. The confused mixture of his memories of Pauline and doing the wild and forbidden thing excited him, and a bolt of desire ran down his genitals, giving at length and softening the lips of his anus. Surrounding all of this lust was a border of politeness. He wanted to F. her tenderly." This is his daughter. "But the tenderness would not hold. The tightness of her vagina was more than he could bear. His soul seemed to slip down to his guts and fly out into her, and the gigantic thrust he made into her then provoked the only sound she made, a hollow suck of air in the back of her throat, like the rapid loss of air from a circus balloon. Following the disintegration and the falling away of sexual desire, he was conscious of her wet soapy hands on his wrists, the fingers of her clenching. But whether her grip was from hopeless, from a hopeless but stubborn struggle to be free, or from some other emotion, he could not tell. Removing himself from her was so painful to him, he cut it short and snatched his genitals out of the dry harbor of her vagina. She appeared to have fainted. The mom stood up and could see only her grayish panties, so sad and limp around her ankles. Again, the hatred mixed with tenderness. The hatred would not let him pick her up. The tenderness forced him to cover her. So, when the child regained consciousness, she was lying on the kitchen floor under a heavy quilt, trying to connect the pain between her legs with the face of her mother looming over her." So I'm sorry to subject that, you to that, but this is what's in the school libraries.
What library, Jamie?
I have a spreadsheet.
I do not believe that book is in one of our District Six libraries.
You can believe whatever you want, Dr. Pilch, and I know you guys have denied this, but it's in there.
No, may I finish, please? I have seen pieces of that transcript you just read. My staff and I have verified what that book is, and it is my understanding that book does not exist in a District Six non-charter school. Now, if you have other information on that, I would welcome that information.
I certainly do, and you are mistaken.
Please tell me the school right now, Ms. Weber.
I have a spreadsheet, and I have to look because you have lots of books like this.
Please share that with me. I want to work with you and address these issues, but I can't if you just come to the podium and try to horrify us by reading us something like that. Please share the information with me, Ms. Weber.
I'm not trying to horrify you. I have met with a higher-up who assured me this stuff wasn't in the library, so that's why I brought this to a board meeting.
I need the title of the book, and I need the library, please.
And we will send you the spreadsheet because there's dozens of these books in your school library, some very graphic pictures that I know I haven't slept normally since seeing.
Thank you, Ms. Weber. Next tonight, we have Ms. Tara Hanson. Welcome, Ms. Hanson. Thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, thank you. So, I'm a parent of two District Six students, and I am a DAC member, and I just wanted to share a few of my experiences with the district and district programs and staff and why I support the Mill Levy. So we have two kids that have gone through district schools since kindergarten. Our daughter graduated from Northridge last year, and she is currently a freshman at UNC. When she got to Northridge, she decided she wanted to sign up for the MJ ROTC program. She thought that after high school, she wanted to go into the Navy. And after two years of being in what is an amazing program at Northridge, she decided that it wasn't for her. We are very grateful that she got to participate in this program, and we are also very grateful that she found this out during high school and not during military enlistment. After that, she continued to be very involved with high school and different programs. She also took several courses at Ames through Northridge, and they transferred to UNC. Our son, who is currently a junior at Northridge, has also been involved in sports and many programs. He is doing very well academically and socially. We feel a big part of his success is the teachers and support staff that he has had the last few years at Northridge and at McCullough Middle School. One example of this is when our son was at McCullough, he got to organize a basketball tournament as a fundraiser with other students. Mr. Paxton, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Stewart, and other office staff supported and encouraged the kids. They helped them organize the tournament and buy concessions. The tournament was a great success, and it was so much fun to watch. Our kids got to play against the teachers and other staff, and it was just really amazing to see teachers and support staff that were having fun with our kids and supported them and obviously enjoyed what they were doing and care about our kids. The last few years, I've also had the opportunity to serve on DAC, and I've had the opportunity to hear about different schools and the work our district is doing through the family center. The support that the family center is providing to students and their family is so important to our community, and I feel that it sets its apart from other districts. I am excited to see new things the district is doing, and one of the things I'm very excited about is the new Jefferson High School. I feel like it'll benefit our students and help them with their career path. I feel like there's always work to do, but the district is moving in the right direction, and that's why I support the Mill Levy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Next tonight, we have Mr. David Meek. Mr. Meek here. Next tonight, we have Mr. Angel Flores. Welcome, Mr. Flores. Thank you for being here tonight, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you for having me. This is my first meeting, and I had no idea what a thank you I owe all of you for doing what you do, so thank you. My name's Angel Flores. I live in District Six. All three of my children attended D6 schools. Two of my children and one of my daughter-in-laws all teach in D6. And so I'm here to voice my support for the upcoming Mill Levy override continuation. I serve as pastor of Mosaic Church in Evans. I also serve as the chair-elect on the board for United Way of Weld County. And recently, the United Way board voted to support this Mill Levy override continuation. A couple of board members had to recuse themselves for obvious reasons, but that board consists of myself. Sarah Sealy is in charge of business development for FMBO Bank. Jennifer Scholz is the CFO of Hensel Phelps. Tim Brightenson is an attorney with Otis and Beddingfeld. Dr. Pilch, superintendent of our own school district. Nina Durango-Terres is owner of Can Do Concrete. Matt Anderson, CEO of Ancon Two Constructors. Perry Buck is a Weld County Commissioner. Jeff Carlson is CEO of Weld Trust. Clint Dudley is Director of Thompson Rivers Park and Recreation. Lori Gamma is the owner of DeGamma Web Studios. Evan Hyatt directs marketing and communication for Care Synergy. Chuck Jensen is Vice President of Ames Community College. Raymond Lee III is City Manager for City of Greeley. Justin Martinez is State Farm Agent. Steve Moreno, Weld County Commissioner. Tom Norton, our former mayor. Paul Rowe, Land Manager for PDC Energy. Brian Schiller is Vice President of Flotter and Peterson. Johan Van Nuenhausen is Superintendent of Weld County School District Six, I was just, sorry, School District RE1. Julie Cozat, Chris Richardson, and John Hayfley are all community volunteers. One of the best indicators of future behavior is past behavior, and this school district leadership team is demonstrated by their past behavior to be excellent stewards of the financial resources entrusted to them, so thank you for that. A lot has been done, a lot is being done, but we are far from done. And so I would again like to voice my support for this Mill Levy override continuation because I think it's going to help get us there. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Next tonight, we have Ms. Sonia Miller.
We're not having... I'm speaking. He's withholding some things from me. We're going to continue on Jamie's. She had a book that she read to you. I'm going to read this book to you. This is Gender Queer. This is also in our libraries.
This is not in our library. Ms. Miller.
There is some. Look at this. This is in our book.
Can we turn Ms. Miller's microphone off, please?
No.
It is not in our library, Ms. Miller.
You are incorrect. That book is not in District Six schools.
Ms. Miller, you are out of order. Please sit down. Those books, you heard our superintendent say, are not in our library. They are not in a District Six library, Ms. Miller?
That's fine. We have a spreadsheet of all the books and where they are, so we'll give that to all of you. Appreciate it if you would let me finish my time because I have some other stuff to say regarding other things besides the pornography that's in our schools, okay? First of all, I want to remind the community what this board has done to our students. I want to remind the community that they have porn in our schools. I want to remind the community that they are out of control with their spending. They silenced the public. This gentleman that came with me wanted to speak tonight. He's got grandkids in this school. He was told that he is not allowed to speak because he is not a resident. I am probably going to sign a lease for him to move into my basement so that he can tell you what he's got to tell you for three minutes, okay? They've shot up our kids with this experimental vaccine. They've got this bus out to our kids to shoot them up with an experimental shot that is proven, that is proving itself to be murderous, okay? They have accepted bribes to offer serial testing to our students. Ironically, they can only afford to pay our bus drivers $13 an hour while our superintendent makes $286,000 a year. They do their best to silence the public. You're not going to get away with this. You're not going to be able to operate in darkness anymore. That's what's happening, is we're bringing this to light. I am so sick and tired of every person on here who echoes the eight people before them. If you guys had an original thought, I would like to hear it, okay? Everybody just, I'd like to echo the person before me. Over it.
Okay, Mr. Matthews, you cannot insult other speakers in our boardroom. You cannot do that, Ms. Miller.
Mill Levy override, you guys. $78 million.
You forfeited your right to speak. Let the record show that we have not tried to silence you. We have tried to let you speak, though you've continued to say things that are not true about people in this district and about this district. We continue, and we invite you back to our next board meeting to speak again, though you will again say things that are not true about what's in our libraries, and you will again offend most of our audience. But thank you for being here, Ms. Miller. Next speaking tonight, we have President Andy Feinstein, again.
President Matthews, I really feel like we owe our guests an apology who, for two meetings now, Ms. Miller has come to the podium and spoken badly of the people in the room who have chosen to come and offer support of the district. And I am deeply sorry that we have allowed her to do that. I'm very sorry. And it's gone on for two meetings, and it's hurtful to this community, and it's hurtful to those people who do support District Six. We welcome your criticism. We welcome your dissension, but you may not come into this room and criticize other guests in this room. That's going too far.
Thank you for being here, President Feinstein. Welcome.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment. In addition to my role as President of UNC, I'm a resident within District Six, and both of my children graduated from Greeley Central High School, so go Wildcats. I'd like to speak in support of continuing the 2017 Mill Levy override, which is currently set to expire in 2023. The investments we make in the education of current and future generations are vital to the success of our students and our community. Already, the district has made effective use of the public's investments by improving safety and security, attracting and maintaining a competitive workforce, and supporting academic and vocational programs. Renewal of the MLO is critical to sustaining the important work that we do, especially as our district faces projected growth in the coming years. Continued investment in our public education system brings many benefits. For example, the extension will preserve the program that allows any student to enroll in college-level courses at Ames and UNC at no cost to their families. Career readiness programs like this are critical to our efforts to close the widening gap between high school graduation and college degree attainment, which can be life-changing for students and have a positive impact on the lives of the people and their families and in their communities. This funding will also ensure that students have access to updated textbooks and technology, that after-school and summer school programs continue, and that the district is able to help equip students as future leaders in our district, our state, and beyond. I firmly believe that our community benefits from investments in education, and I support the renewal of the Mill Levy override. Thank you.
Thank you, President Feinstein. Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you to all of our public speakers. Again, we apologize for the poor behavior of some of our speakers, but we thank you for those who are considerate and respectful. Next on our agenda tonight is our superintendent's report. So, Dr. Pilch, would you like to give a short report, please?
Thank you, President Matthews. I have some important celebrations, and it's hard to celebrate after watching the display of what I just saw. And so I just need a moment. First of all, we had a really great week last week here. You mentioned the VIP tour. Dr. Dattery and I and the Director of Cultural Excellence, Jesse T. Arena, our coordinator over at our family center, David Reyes and his staff, we got to spend some time with the folks who lead the Colorado Education Initiative for the state of Colorado. The Colorado Education Initiative is a forward-thinking group of community leaders from throughout the state of Colorado who work to serve school districts that, who are the most innovative in the country, and to partner with school districts for significant school improvement. And we had the opportunity to be with their entire board here in Greeley last week because they wanted to bring their Board of Directors here to see the work that is going on in a school district that they were calling a turnaround district. So, Dr. Dattery and I were pretty touched by that compliment and moved really by the opportunity to talk about the work that has occurred here in our system over almost the last decade now to move District Six. And after we left the family center, and we're going to get you all over there for a visit because there's just remarkable work occurring out of that group of folks over there, we're going to get you over there. But after we left the family center, we went out to the new Greeley West High School and got to be in classrooms and hear more intensely about current technical education and the PTEC programs and just really experienced that beautiful building and the amazing instruction that's taking place there. And so it was really an honor to host the Colorado Education Initiative and really an honor to be the school district that they are bringing their board to this school year. We are the one they're showcasing this year with their board to help their board see the work that occurs in districts that are really doing the right things for students and ensuring equity and access for all students and pushing all students toward improvement. So that was very exciting last week. We also had the opportunity last week to work a little bit with our new partner at Twinton Pre-Engineering Academy, Chevron. And tomorrow, at the Great Education Luncheon down in Denver, Chevron is the title sponsor, and they have chosen to showcase the work that is happening at our new pre-engineering academy in grades K through 8. So the focus tomorrow at the Great Education Luncheon is really on career readiness and career and technical education and careers for students. And so we get to be the showcase for the preschool through 8th grade part of that celebration tomorrow. The rest of the folks that'll be there tomorrow are all from the secondary level, of course, because when you think about career and college readiness, the focus does tend to be more at the secondary level. So we will be honored tomorrow, and we'll share that video with you all at the end of the week. I didn't release it yet because it's getting released tomorrow for the first time. So both of those things were really exciting for us here in the district last week and as we continue to go into this week. And then I'll just say for everyone, we did do a Mill Levy override update in our board work session where we walked the board through the website that shows where you can find factual information about the Mill Levy override renewal and about the ballot measure that is a no-tax-increase ballot measure. It's a continuation of our current Mill Levy override. It will sunset, and so we walked the board through that tonight and shared with them a little bit about what we can and can't do when we're on district time around the Fair Campaign Practices Act. So we're gearing up to educate our community and help them to understand the importance of that Mill Levy override. And I am truly grateful to those of you who came out tonight to talk about the importance of the Mill Levy override. You know, we believe it makes a difference, but to have you all come into the room and into a rather hostile environment, which again, I'm so terribly embarrassed and sorry for, but to have you come into the room and speak your support for and to share the difference this Mill Levy override has made for you and your organization and for your children and for you as staff members, it's really meaningful for us to hear those stories as well. So thank you so much for coming out tonight. Thank you, President Matthews.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. I unfortunately skipped our work session report, and so, Ms. Lemon, will you give us our work session report, please?
The work session opened with comments and reports from board members surrounding school visits, homecoming, and district VIP tours. The board reviewed upcoming events. Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, Kent Henson, presented an update on the transportation department. Dr. Pilch provided an update on the Mill Levy override and the Fair Campaign Practices Act. District Six website resources were shared for child abuse and neglect identification and reporting training, Title IX training, and the background check process. Community engagement was discussed, and the board wrapped up the work session with a debrief from each board member.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next is our consent agenda, and we'll need a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you, both. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Papas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries, 7-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next, we have an Innovation 2030 Student Learning and Achievement Goal One update, and that's on concurrent enrollment. And so we know that a number of you have come to talk about this, and so we are glad to receive this report. But, Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say to start us off?
No, I think we should just launch right into it. They're ready to go. I think I've said plenty. Mr. Osmus, I'll let you take the microphone.
Well, good evening, President Matthews, members of the board, and Dr. Pilch. My name is Anthony Osmus. I am the Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Leadership and Career and College Readiness. Tonight, I'm joined by Jenny Schilling, Nelson Rodriguez, Jordan Carlberg, and Lauren Apelhans, as well as some great students. We have Diego Guzman, Tucker Hurley, and LA Silvernail. We're here to give you an update on student learning and achievement, Priority One of personalized learning, career pathways, and concurrent enrollment. Our values drive our work. Although all of these are important, this work mainly aligns with building positive relationships with students, families, and communities, promoting access, opportunity, and choice, and committing to excellence, innovation, and continuous improvement. As you know, within our Innovation 2030 Plan, we have four focus areas: student learning and achievement, strengthening partnerships, culture and climate, and operational and organizational effectiveness. The work of career pathways falls under the Student Learning and Achievement focus area. Our first goal under the Student Learning and Achievement is to provide a personalized learning experience so all students graduate on time and are career and college ready. Our main strategy for this goal is to increase student engagement and career pathways and respond to industry, business, and community needs. The actions tied to this strategy are to increase student engagement and career pathways that respond to industry, business, and community needs, further develop career pathways, providing a continuum for student post-secondary goals, provide options for all students to earn industry certificates for graduation guidelines, and ensure alignment with workforce demands. Now, to talk more specifically about our career pathway program is Jenny Schilling, our Director of Career and Technical Education. Jenny. Jenny.
Thank you, Mr. Osmus. It is my pleasure to provide an update on the career pathway work this evening and our goal of engaging every student in career pathways developed in partnership with business and industry and allowing students to set and achieve their goals to their future career paths. Every CTE pathway consists of three components that support our students in being career and college ready. First, academic and technical skills where rigorous coursework and technical skill proficiency is provided, which provides concurrent enrollment, and the opportunity for our students to earn industry-recognized certifications. Second, work-based learning, including internships and apprenticeships. And third, career and technical student organizations, or CTSOs, such as FFA, FCCLA, TSA, Pro Start, FBLA, DECA, and Skills USA. I had to make sure I didn't forget anybody. Where leadership, communication, teamwork, time management, organization, and other skills are applied through career development events where students have the opportunity to practice their learning against their peers. Over the last year, we have expanded our pathways to include fruit production and processing under the Agriculture Academy, and we have added a baking and pastry class to the Culinary Arts Pathway at Greeley West High School under the Hospitality Academy, which the mill levy override has supported in classroom materials and supplies. Additionally, in the 2021-22 school year, the mill levy override made it possible for students to enroll in approximately 1,397 classes through concurrent enrollment, earning 3,510 credits, a savings of more than $250,000 in tuition, and an additional savings of $6,500 in fees and textbooks. In the 2016 and 17 school year, prior to the mill levy override, participation in concurrent enrollment was significantly less when families faced the financial responsibility of their student for, excuse me, financial responsibility for paying for their students to participate in concurrent enrollment. Since the mill levy override passing in 2017, approximately 4,682 concurrent enrollment classes have been taken by D six students. It is also exciting to share with you that 123 students in the 21-22 school year earned an industry certification within their pathway, which was made possible through the mill levy override supporting those skill assessments for students. We are expanding our career pathway work to include cosmetology, early childhood education, cybersecurity, welding and construction, with an electrical focus at the District Six Career and Technical Education Center. Through the bond dollars, the structure of the D six Career and Tech Center is being built and through partnership organizations such as the Success Foundation and the Mill Levy Override, classroom supplies, materials, consumables, concurrent enrollment, industry certifications, and work-based learning opportunities will be provided to our students in preparing them to be career and college ready. I'm happy to introduce my colleague, Mr. Jordan Carlberg, Career Pathway Specialist for District Six, to share about pathways to technology, early college high school, or P-Tech programming.
Thank you, Jenny. What makes P-Tech model unique is the strong partnership we have with our industry partners as well as with our Ames Community College. P-Tech Pathway, or Pathways of Technology in Early College High School, is a unique educational model allowing high school students to earn their high school diploma and an associate's in applied science, also while gaining relevant work experience, oftentimes through summer internships. Courses are taken both for high school and college credit at no cost to the families. P-Tech programs are offered a construction pathway at both Greeley West and Jefferson High School and the Advanced Manufacturing Pathway at Greeley Central High School. Our industry partners are very involved. They meet monthly to advise our program development to match industry needs as well as mentoring our students. Currently, there are 31 sophomores, 16 juniors enrolled in the P-Tech at Greeley West High School. Three students from Greeley Central have met all high school graduation requirements and are now completing their associates in industrial technology at Ames. One student, as President Matthews mentioned, Raquel, through the apprenticeship program was hired by Vestas, is working in Denmark, also taking remote classes through Ames to continue her work through her associates. Additionally, a student from Jefferson High School has also met all graduation requirements and is now working towards their associates in construction management. This program makes a true and long-lasting impact, not only for our students but their families, but providing students the opportunity to earn their associates while in high school in an industry and a career that is high skilled, high demand, and high wage. A lot of the work that is in and around P-Tech has been made possible through the mill levy override. These funds provide opportunity to host meaningful industry-to-student mentor events, skilled trades competitions where students are able to compete with each other as well as showcase the skills that they have learned, as well as these funds have made it possible to purchase equipment that aligns with current industry standards. Personally, I am very proud of the two gentlemen that are going to come behind me. They are Diego Guzman and Tucker Hurley. They're juniors at Greeley West High School. They have started the P-Tech program at Greeley West when I was teaching there. They are here to share their experience within the career pathways at Greeley West High School.
So like Mr. Carlberg said, my name is Tucker Hurley.
I'm Diego.
So we so like Carlberg said, we've been a part of the P-Tech program since we're freshmen, and I feel like we've learned a lot and we've gained lots and lots of skills. When I stepped into the P-Tech program, I didn't really know much about construction or even if I want to go into it. But as I've gone went through the years, I've learned lots of stuff. Like we are studying plumbing right now and Revit. And for you guys don't know what Revit is, it's bin modeling of houses on the computer. So we can and with this, we're going to build a whole entire house and by ourselves and we can take that out into the workforce and get be more prepared for it.
Well, personally for me, I believe that P-Tech helps me like not only just the associates, but helps me like push to keep on like working after high school and like it pushes me to be like to continue like my career after. And besides like wanting to be to keep after, it also gives me more like background knowledge of like what I'm like that could help me during like the summer and like during other like construction jobs and different like skills I could use.
Okay, so was it freshman year? So at the end of freshman year, we participated in a skills event and we made a four-foot by four-foot shed. And we were on different teams of four about. And we had industry partners reach out and were helping us work through this. And so we got those connections through there. But then last year, at the end of the year, we were able to be more like the general managers and help the freshmen. So we were able to build those connections as well, as well as progressing our connections to the in industry partners.
And then also, like the end of the year, it helped us change like our roles. Like it helped us like build off of what we learned from our freshman year to our sophomore year. And we learned more about the managing part besides like the building, like the actual like hands-on work.
Thank you, Dr. Diego. Yeah, could not be more proud of that program and of these two gentlemen. It's now my pleasure to introduce Lauren Applehans. She is the Teacher Cadet Instructor at Greeley Central High School.
Hi, thank you, Board, for having me and Dr. Pilch for having me. I wanted to speak to the Teacher Cadet Program at Greeley Central High School. It used to be housed at Northridge and it has been a great asset. The mill levy override has allowed us to this year, we're offering concurrent enrollment to 19 students who are interested in becoming teachers. And so they'll spend time with me this semester and the next semester they'll actually be placed in the classroom. And these are K-12 educators, so they could take this class, EDU 2211, I think is what it is, and they could apply it to early childhood education or they could apply it to UNC. And then students through the Ames program, so they're getting concurrent enrollment through Ames, and they are able to move on to the TREP program or the TREP program, which is a partnership with community colleges at the moment, but it provides two additional years of college at no cost to the student as long as they're pursuing a degree in education. And then they can connect with the Ames to UNC program and head to UNC. That is the Teacher Cadet Program, and I'm pretty excited about it. So we have we have future educators, people. Now it is my pleasure to introduce Nelson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Lauren. I just want to say we have so much to be proud of as a district. There are some amazing things that are happening here, and I'm pleased to share with you this evening information regarding work-based learning programs that are available to students across our district. I thought it'd be helpful to share this graphic from the Colorado Workforce Development Council. Since we're talking about work-based learning, I think it's important to set some context. This graphic does a fine job illustrating what work-based learning can look like. Essentially, work-based learning is a continuum of activities that provides students with hands-on, real-world experience, and this work relies on developing industry relationships and learning opportunities outside of the classroom. The first program I want to highlight tonight is the Career Explore Internship Program. District Six facilitates paid internships for students, allowing them to explore their career path and develop lifelong skills. Internships range from 150 to 180 hours and are paid at least minimum wage. These positions are paid directly by the employer or the District Six. We do have some limited funding available to support new business partners and nonprofit organizations that wish to participate in our program, and that is supported directly through the mill levy override and grants that we receive around workforce development. We had an incredible summer program. This year, we had a total of 122 students and 40 unique employers that participated in our program. And included on the bottom of the chart or the slide is really the breakdown of student participation by high school. And you'll see that we have some good representation across the school district. Over the last two years, we have seen significant growth in program participation. The low number you see in 2020 was a direct result of the pandemic. However, this past summer, we were able to increase the number of internships to 122, putting us back to where we were pre-pandemic, and we're really proud about that. And our program just continues to grow. Throughout the internship experience, I have the opportunity of conducting site visits and meeting with students and employers, and we also collect end-of-internship evaluations. And this is what we are learning about our students. For over half of our participants, this internship is their very first job experience, and I think that that is powerful. Our mission is to ensure every student is career and college ready, and what an honor it is to be able to facilitate the first job experience for many of our students. Seventy-three percent of our participants have taken at least one CTE course. That, to me, says that our career pathway programs are aligned. Our teachers and counselors are encouraging out-of-the-classroom experiences. And I think it's important to note that not every one of our students has a declared pathway, and this program is also beneficial for those students. Eighty-seven percent of our students indicated having a meaningful learning experience. I would like for this number to be closer to 100%, but I understand that there are many factors that contribute to this. But what we learn is that when we are able to place students into internships where they're able to make connections to what it is that they're doing and what it is they want to do after high school, it's a much richer experience for both the student and the employer. I invited a special guest to join me here today, and I would like to introduce you to L.E. Silvernail. She is a current senior at Greeley Central and interested in cosmetology. This past summer, she had an internship with Brickhouse Salon. Brickhouse Salon is a new business partner, and they were able to participate in our program through the support of the mill levy override. So we have a short video to share, and then I'll invite L.E. to share some additional remarks afterwards.
As cheesy as it sounds, I like seeing how like happy people are after they get their hair done and how life-changing it is like because every day you look in the mirror like bad hair days are a real thing. Like your hair is such a big part of you, and by helping these people feel more confident and beautiful and stuff, it's just fun to see it. I've been interested in cosmetology since probably middle school. For this internship, I just do things like doing the towels or cleaning the bowls and occasionally mixing colors and washing out clients and also just getting to shadow the hairdressers here and learn some little tips and tricks you might not necessarily learn in school. It's been absolutely amazing. It's I think it's really cool that they take high school kids, they pair their interests and set them up with a business so they're able to experience the business before they ever spend the money and time on going to school for something. I feel like it gives them exposure to the reality of that job. I just really enjoy doing hair, and everywhere you go, somebody is always going to need their hair done, so you always have a job opportunity. And it's just fun and a way to for people to express their creativity and also need to in a way. My plan is to specialize in like like the wild colors just because I feel like those are not only satisfying, but it's it's a way to express yourself and I feel like it's fun. You know, it's more than just going blonde or getting some highlights. It's like it's just really fun. After high school, I'm planning to go to Windsor Beauty of School and hopefully afterwards, once I'm all licensed, I can come work here.
Now I want to invite L.E. to join me here at the podium.
I just want to say what a great opportunity this is, and I'm so thankful that I had the experience of it. It really confirmed that this is what I want to do as a career and experience the industry before and get to learn some tips and tricks you might not necessarily learn in school. I'm also really excited for the CTE Program Center next year offering cosmetology and as well as the interns next year who get to experience and just have fun with the program. Thank you. As cheesy as it sounds, I like...
All right, so as many of you know, we have a nationally registered apprenticeship program in manufacturing in partnership with Vestas Wind Blades out in Windsor. And this program includes paid work experience, related instruction, mentorship, and industry credential. Students complete 2,000 hours of on-the-job training and 144 hours of related classroom instruction. The related instruction is available to our students through the Advanced Manufacturing Pathway at Greeley Central and also through our partners at Ames Community College. As Jordan and many folks have already referenced, Raquel is someone that we want to celebrate. You all got to meet her the last time we were here presenting, and as soon as she gets back from Denmark in about eight weeks, we anticipate that she would have completed her 2,000 hours of on-the-job training, and she's going to be the first apprentice to actually complete this program. We're really proud of her and we'll keep you posted on her progress. This this summer, we welcomed a new cohort of apprentices, a total of seven students that started working at Vestas. The last program I would like to highlight this evening is the Banner Job Shadow, which is a partnership between North Colorado Family Medicine and the Greeley Central Health Science Academy. This program offers a unique shadowing experience for students interested in health sciences. Every week, we have one student that participates in the structured four-hour experience, which also includes a lunch debrief with the provider they shadowed. The program was offered to 14 students last spring, and this fall, we have another 12 students participating. And recently, we also developed a Family Medicine Summer Internship that is going to be available to those students that participate in the Job Shadow Experience. So we're really proud of that. And I leave you with another short video that highlights this program and the experiences of our students and partners.
One of the things that I've really enjoyed is when I look across and I don't think they realize that I'm looking at them and their eyes have lit up. And it's just exciting to see that our world is so applicable and to get a fresh perspective instead of eyes because we get so used to seeing the same things over and over.
It was pretty cool just to see like the eardrum, because it's something you don't see normally.
I try to sit down with the student I'm with and just kind of walk them through the patients that I'm going to be seeing and the kinds of things we're going to be kind of talking about throughout the day. And then we just go in and see patients.
Seeing it in real life was a whole lot better way to see it than from diagrams and stuff.
We kind of walk through procedures, we walk through normal office visits, and kind of go from there and just try to give them an experience of what it's like to be a family doc.
It was different because it was more hands-on and being able to physically see the different varieties of problems that doctors can face on a day-to-day basis, whereas in the classroom, you see them all on like the screen or like on packets and stuff.
My patients have all been really, really lovely about being open to the experience as well. I haven't had a patient turn away a student who's shadowing yet, which has also been really lovely. And I'm very appreciative of my patients for doing that.
A lot of us are excited to help increase exposure for the medical field as a whole and help our students have opportunities that a lot of us didn't have, didn't know that there was opportunities to shadow and get involved and learn about other professional options that are out there in the wild and all the different things that help make this profession run, not just physicians and nurses.
I've been a part of it since my freshman year, and it really has grown a lot. It started from just wanting to be a normal doctor to actually going to like specific details, like dermatologists. My whole like interest was just the human body. I really liked it, enjoyed it, especially anatomy and everything. I really wanted to pursue it and pursue the medical field for the future. I'd say it's a great opportunity to see the field, the field of work. Like, you really get firsthand experience with what they do, how they do it, the skills and everything given for it. It's just a great experience, really.
I'd just like to wrap this up by thanking this group behind me, quite the power team we've assembled. And also just to thank the voters for approving the bond and the MLO to make all this possible. So we can't do this without them. We still have some next steps. We're very proud of the work we've done to this point. Next step still, we're going to develop that career pathway that's the District Six CT Center, recruit and retain those high-quality CT teachers, expand post-secondary programming, and then cultivate additional industry partners for those work-based learning and CT advisory boards. And so this is great work. We still have a lot of great work ahead of us. And at this point, we'd like to open up to any questions or comments that you might have.
Thank you. I'm sure we will have a few comments or questions for you. Lead us off, Ms. Mueller.
Well, first of all, Tucker, Diego, and Ellie, I applaud you for jumping in and taking this adventure on of learning a skill. I think, Diego and Tucker, I happened to see, I think we were at Greeley West Campus when you were doing that skills event. And we saw all, were y'all all out in the parking lot? Yeah, we saw y'all out there in the parking lot. And the biggest question that came to mind, and I don't know if you're the ones to answer it or if your instructor can answer it, but do you still sell the things you build? Because I know that had happened at some point in the past.
Yeah, we still sell the things we build. Obviously, I'm in a new role, so there is a new instructor at Greeley West High School right now. And so we'll have to ask him on what the spring semester looks like. I don't want to volunteer for anything.
No, I know. Well, and I will tell you, I remember, I think that had gone up in social media, and those things would be gone like that. Whether it was a shed or a small greenhouse or whatever it was that y'all had built, they're very popular. You do excellent work. I also just want to say thank you to Nelson. I appreciate all the work you do with the internship program and the community business leaders and business owners that participate in that. That is a tremendous opportunity for our students, and I really, really appreciate all the work you do for that. I do have one last question that I just wanted to point out, and that is this. We hear pretty regularly in listening sessions and other things that people don't believe we have technical education, career and technical education. And I think people are using this old phraseology of VOTEC or, you know, vocational education. How do we, as board members, help you as the experts in this work to get the word out there that we are robust in career and technical education, that we have many programs for students, and that we are supporting certificate, industry certificates and training for our students to go directly into career?
Well, I think you just said it by just sharing those things with those that may be asking you. And you can always send them to us, too. We're always happy to share and speak about all the fabulous things we have. That we have very robust career and technical education programs. We have wonderful career pathways, and I think we brought the evidence with us tonight to share with you that we are doing really fantastic work in this arena.
Well, thank you for all the work you do. And thank you, students, for digging in and, and learning those skills to make an impact on your future.
Ms. Mash.
Thank you so much for coming and sharing. I wanted to ask Tucker and Diego, you mentioned that you're going to build a house, a whole house. Can you tell us a little bit more about that?
So through the program, it's called Revit. We made bin models, and through this process, we made every dimension. We made, put in every door, made sure it's right. Made multiple levels, like we're about to start on the second floor right now. As we finish the first floor, about to put in basement. But so through that, we get, we get to, we have guidelines, but we get to design a house. And we get to see the process and see how to do everything that goes into a house and see how all the different like plumbing, electrical, HVAC, all that stuff plays into the house and the blueprints in the house.
And Dad, okay, thank you. Well, and Ellie, I wanted to thank you for being an ambassador. It's so exciting to hear that we have a new business partner in Brick House Salon. And I, from, from what I have seen from the video and what your experience was, I assume that they're going to be continuing partners. So I thank you for just showing class indignity in your role and representing the district and bringing alongside another partner for us. So yeah, I just wanted to thank you all for coming and again apologize for tonight. For not protecting you. So sorry.
Mr. Bentley.
Hey, yeah, I just wanted to say kudos to you guys. The trades are obviously a favorite of mine. I love when we get to go see like the Greeley West new shop. And the CT Center is really, really exciting for me personally and in my livelihood and in the world, I think. One thing I just wanted to note is, is the one thing that I don't think it's said enough is trades or, or you go the white-collar path with college and everything, is the trades, you prosper through hard work. And I think that's one of the most invaluable lessons you guys will probably get out of that is if you find out one thing is the path, the quickest path to success is hard work. And a lot of people forget that. They think that there's a magic pill and you're going to get on Shark Tank and create something. And it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not sexy. It's hard and you've got to grind. So get your hands dirty and then keep up the hard work. So good job, you guys.
And I would just respond to that and just say, you hear that sometimes that we're taking that out of schools. And just want you to know that it really is alive and well here in District Six. And, and we are preparing our kids to be career-ready as well.
Thank you, guys.
So hang on just one second, you guys. May I? Those are Matthews. So Lauren, I have to tell you, I was with an elementary school staff today. And they asked me the question, so what is District Six doing about to, to get teachers, more teachers, and to attract more teachers? And I said, we're doing it at Heath Middle School and Central High School. And so thank you, thank you for building our future teachers. Thank you. And Ellie, I have to tell you, you know that Brick House Salon is my hair salon. And they loved having you there, and they were so excited that they became a part of the program. And so I want to show this, that, you know, you all hear me say, tell all your good stories, tell your good stories. Well, I might have been chirping about our internship programs at the hair salon and about how cool they are. And maybe they heard that. And so we brought on a new partner. So thank you so much. Thank you, all of you adults and your young people. And you really are the reason we do what we do every day. And thank you for reminding us of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, for all of you watching, watching at home or that are here tonight, and when you hear people say, well, we just don't have trades in schools anymore. As Ms. Mueller said, we, we have a robust career and technical education program in District Six at least. And just remind them of that. Don't let people continue to say that without correcting that. Next on our agenda is revisions to policy DJB federal procurement. And this is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education agree that Evans School District Six approves revisions to policy DJB federal procurement as presented.
Thank you both. Dr. Pelch, this one just looks like some changes to will to may, so I don't think there's anything to say. You've got nothing to say. Any questions or comments from, from board members on this policy change? I'm not seeing any, so can you give us a vote, please, Ms. Lemon?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda are revisions to policy J I C D E bullying prevention and education. And there's a little bit more to this one. Dr. Pelch, is there any comment that you have?
We need to move first.
We need to move, sorry. I'm trying to get us through.
He's trying to move. He's trying to move. They're losing.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves revisions to policy J I C D E bullying prevention and education as presented.
Thank you both. Dr. Pelch, anything that you would like to tell us on this one?
I, I think what's important for me to share with you about this policy, and it is a revision to our existing anti-bullying policy, and it incorporates the latest requirements that came out of legislative changes last spring. It does model after the Colorado Association of School Boards' model policy. And, you know, we, we've been hearing more about bullying, and we can do more. And this policy puts some pieces in place for us to do more. And, and so I, I welcome the opportunity to have you all approve these revisions.
Are there any comments, questions from board members? I'm not seeing any. So Ms. Lemon.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
We've come to the end of our business tonight, but Director Mash has asked if she could say something quickly.
Well, I, I feel like we, we do not have to allow public comment by law. And this, we have students in their room, and this is just unacceptable. And so I feel like we should suspend that for a while. And I'm just sick that I did not stop that woman from what she read. I knew what it was. And it has reached a point. It's not okay. And it makes it so that the good work we're doing is the last thing, it's the last, most important thing that we are doing. Our students come first. So I don't know if that's a motion, if we have to, or if anyone. We can receive emails if people want to share something with us. They can call us, they can meet with us. We have offered and offered and offered to meet with these people who are upset, and they refuse. They're not interested in a solution or, or conversation. So why do we need to just have them scream at us every single time? And I'm sorry, I have reached the point. It's not okay. So if we discuss whatever that's what I, I think that the privilege has been lost.
The order of the agenda and public participation is not a requirement by law. It is a choice by the Board of Education, and the board could choose, either board leadership could choose to make changes or action could be taken to make changes. I, I agree with, with you, Ms. Mash, that they've just gone too far to come in here and to read an excerpt like that when they know, they know very well those books do not exist in our system. I've been asked these questions. I've had my team research this. I, I assume they exist somewhere, but they do not exist in District Six schools. And I, I do think that it did go too far, but I also think that we should have a more in-depth conversation about this because there are the folks who come because they want us to, they want to support us. They want us to hear what's going well. They want to celebrate with us the successes of their children or of their students or in their own classroom. And so I think we need to be really thoughtful about that. But public participation is not, is not required.
I do want to speak to that, and I think people may be under a false pretense that we are required by First Amendment rights or law to have public comment. CASB, our Colorado Association of School Boards, has guided us that we are to have a meeting, we are having a meeting in public. We do not have to have a public meeting. It does not have to have public comment. I think it is something we offer to do for transparency. I will tell you that it is interesting to have this conversation, and thank you, Ms. Mash, for bringing it up directly after the bullying policy we just talked about because false accusations is a form of bullying in this new policy. And I do believe that without any proof or substantiation and without our regular standard of approaches to not respond to public comment, because we do not want to get into a banter, a back-and-forth, an argument. But I think it's important for the public to note that there are many lies being tossed around by certain members of our public that are not proven and that we have a responsibility to the public to educate them that many of the things said tonight were wrong and false and, and lies and not proven. And so there's a point where I feel that if that continues on and we're just going to be continued to call names and said things that are false accusations, that are lies, that we call for adjournment, of which I almost did and then, because that is, I believe, our policy. If we are no longer willing to listen, that we call for adjournment and we simply walk out.
Well, and as far as what is in policy, your policy, our policy is that to be a public speaker, you must be a resident in the district, have, be a guardian or a parent in the district, be a student in the district, or be a staff member of the district. And so the gentleman who was here tonight, when Amy reached out to him, he hadn't provided his address or verification that he was a parent or lived in the district. And Amy reached out to him in an effort to secure his address, to verify that he lives in the district or was a parent or guardian in the district, and he refused to provide that. And, you know, there, there are reasons for that. That we need, we need this time to be time that we hear from our public, our voters, our parents, our staff, the people who are directly impacted by our work and the decisions that we make. And I, but I do think that, you know, we, this is something that we can continue to discuss. You all know that I have believed that transparency was important. I was the one who recommended we increase the public participation time to the three minutes and, and to not hold them to either agenda items or non-agenda items, but you could just sign up to speak. But I think we're all in agreement that we cannot have folks behaving in the manner in which they did tonight in this boardroom.
Ms. Pappas.
I just want to reiterate that, and I also want people to know that we have had the conversation, and it is difficult. It's a difficult position for Michael to be in and Dr. Pelch, myself, the rest of the board. And I think that what we experienced tonight just went over the top so far that it, it is unacceptable, and it has been unacceptable. And I appreciate you bringing it up, Natalie, and I do think that we need to have a further conversation. But I do want you to know that we have had a conversation about this. We've talked about where's the line that you draw and how do you, how do you keep people from having their free speech rights? So I, Michael, I appreciate you, that you, that you led the meeting tonight and tried to set the tone for that. And it is just unfortunate that there are people in our community that just do not and will not pay attention to that and listen. So I look forward to a conversation about how we move forward with public participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pappas. Thank you, Ms. Pappas. Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, I just wanted to apologize to the students that might be listening. You know, they're up here trying to get that out of the school by directly putting it in front of the kids. So not acceptable, and I'm in agreeance, but I also don't want to do any knee-jerk reactions that might have unintended consequences. So I think we need to talk about this, you know, again, for sure.
I think just the last thing I'll say is we expect so much more of our students. And this is what's modeled for them at our board meeting. It's just really just unbelievable. So thank you for the discussion. And I agree, knee-jerk reaction. I mean, that was all I could do to just not walk out.
That wasn't an issue, I'm sorry.
What was that?
That wasn't pointed at you.
No, no, but it's true. It's true.
But it's one thing for us to be criticized or to be demeaned. But when you come in reading pornographic material or you come in and you demean other people in our audience who have chosen to speak, that is not okay. And we do have to have a conversation about that. So thank you.
Again, thank you for being here tonight, whether you've joined us in person or online. We do appreciate you being here. We can't say we're sorry enough. Again, we have tried to strategize and talk through what's appropriate. And obviously, we still have work to do. But thank you for being here. We appreciate you, and this meeting is adjourned.